It is with the law of the clear that I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to our forum meeting this afternoon between our county commissioners and Board of Education. And it's been a while since we've done this, and I think this is a great idea that we do this as often as we need to or if we want to communicate. I know that the lines have always been open between our two boards, and we've got an excellent working relationship, and for that I say thank you. Board of Education is very proud of our facility here, and we welcome you to the Education Center of Haverdome Education. Thank you for coming, and it would be much appreciated. Instead of me going around the room embarrassing myself, I want to give everyone an opportunity to introduce themselves, and I'm Chuck Francis, Chairman of the County Board of Education, and talk this direction, and let's go around and introduce ourselves and what our role is.
My name is Ann Barry. I'm on school board.
I'm Clark.
Scott.
Jimmy Francis.
Brandon Rogers, County Commissioner.
Kevin Hughes, the County Commissioner.
Joe Cannon, Mike, Haverdome School.
I'm Riddell, County Manager.
Jimmy Davis, Finance Director.
Perk, Perpach, County Commissioner.
Bill, County Commissioner.
Chip, County Attorney.
Councilman Francis, Community Guard, School Pod, and Ben Garrett, Super Junior.
Bats, Bows, School Board Attorney, Bobby Rogers.
Steven, Perpach, School Board, Bill, Welton Associates, and Jim.
Jimmy Rogers, School Board Bill.
Larry Ennis, School Board.
Michael Storls, Haverdome County Commissioner.
Thank y'all for introducing yourselves, and of course, I thank everybody who's here today, so thank you for that. And I hesitate doing this, but next on our agenda is we're going to turn it over to the attorneys, Mr. Schmatters, who's going to discuss our central elementary and kind of where we are with that facility, and where we can go and where we can't go, and what we need to do.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. The school board asked me to look at the issue of since the central elementary required surplus and all to the county commissioners, if there was a reason to not, if the county does not want that building, and if we withdraw it and maintain. Chip and I talked about this, and Chip and I agree, although we're not, we agree that once, since the statute doesn't make any division at the time, which the county has to accept the central property, and it seems a bit illegal now, since the county has not accepted the central elementary, then we're free, more in that case, is free to, in essence, prepare, I guess, not surplus anymore, and if there's a reason for the school system to do that, provided the county doesn't be tempted. So I think that's pretty much what we came to the conclusion of, sort of a little contract law, since the statute doesn't provide any timeframe or there's a saving, you know, based on a contract law, we made an offer, the county can't read the time of tip, we can draw that offer at any time, while we find any potential lines on this. That's our position.
Okay. So if we have to, no, again, this is going to involve, I think, openly, can, discussion needs to take place, and Kirk, is your board interested in the building itself, or is it just repositioned and taken on here?
Well, you know, we had a discussion, I think there was a comment, maybe, at our work session about it, and we felt like we were hoping that the school system would want to do that, and understand some pressures that the school system's been under regarding that building and the history of, the recent history of it, but we felt like it would be a good asset for the, for the school system to continue to have and to own for possible future uses of that. And it also, along with that, and then, and I think that we discussed possibly using, maybe that you could use it, and I'm telling you, obviously, not telling schools what we'll do with the property, but use it for their food distribution, possibly, possibly administrative offices in the future, it would keep you from having to construct the new administrative offices, and it's obviously central, that's what it's called. And then it, it could be that we can enter into some joint use of that property with the county. The county's library is right there, and if it joins that property as well as there's a gym, it may be able to be utilized by Haverdome Recreation. So, I mean, all of those things can be fleshed out in the future, but that's why we're hoping that it's possibly retained.
I know you're aware, we had some offers, not really offers, but probably, so there has been some interest in possibly proposing the land and all, but I did see that, you know, our board is not really taking any official position on, to my knowledge, about what we were going to do, we're not, we didn't require the surplus at that time, so as far as I know, we're still open on it, but somebody disagrees.
I'm going to jump in, you know, because everybody knows, you know, I turned on school board just by some time, and then moved on, and the commissioner, and, you know, even before I left the school board, you know, there was discussions at Central Office, and, you know, where, what, and how, and we, and that continued to go on, even as I've been the commissioner now for over six years, and, you know, where are we going to go, and of course, we've got a situation where with the old hospital, we're trying to find a best use situation for that, and I think at one time, we'd even offered that back to you all, and that y'all kind of rejected that, and we went back and forth a little bit about what to do, and we thought we were going to have it, but I guess we looked very quickly, and then, of course, you know, you all ended up in a situation that required that you get to downsize with, with schools because of the enrollment decrease, charter school opening up, and first one thing, and the other. So to me, and I mean, I'm looking, I've thought, I've thought about this, and I put the school board hat on again, and then I put my hat on again, and that's probably, to me, one of the most value, valuable assets that the school system has, I mean, that can be utilized into potentially the, the central office situation. We talked about, you know, IT at one time, trying to get them moved into the situation you got to move there for that, it was talked about the food service movement, well, you got a working cafeteria, you're right there, ready to go, so, you know, it kind of, it serves all those purposes, and then, you know, if you end up with a situation where you had to have additional classrooms, I know we had to flood there at one time, we had to move Central Haverdome into Old Lays Wood School, you got classrooms there, and you know, there's a whole lot of utilizations you can do, and I actually went, went up there the other day, just sit in the parking lot, looked around, thought about it, you know, and what you can, to me, I think that really solves or could solve a lot of problems that are, you know, not really problems, but they're going to have to be issues, it's going to have to be solved in the next couple of years, so.
But Chuck, my opinion is that the school was built for school use, and to me, that's where it needs to stay. I looked around, at least in the east end of county, we got Beaver Dam falling down, it was a good school, Morning Star, Bank School, I guess Rock Hill School's still used by church, but Maggie Valley Elementary's been used by the town hall, but it would be hard to get something other industry or an entity to go in there and refurbish and make that into offices or whatever they want to do. So we, we have had bad luck letting schools go and not be used for quite a bit.
Well, I'll just agree up here too, I really don't understand why y'all created the surplus, to be honest with you, it needs to have. If it's truly surplus, you have a charter school, and you have a Christian academy that's looking for a school, and I think y'all can do a long-term lease with them, or a short-term lease, or you got a higher ten-year lease, and that would give either one of those entities, that helps the community. If you're not going to use it, I think y'all look at that. The gym is a great asset, it's a shame that it's not being used, both of those entities are looking for gym space. I've had real estate agents call me because they knew I was a commissioner, and they were wondering if sensitive is in our blog, you know, evidently the blog was in our court, you know, if we would be interested in selling it. We've also got some people in the community that have ideas, a blue fellow has emailed us, John Curtis, about a kids museum, and doing something like that, so there's a lot of community interest, and I don't know, some of the real estate agents that have contacted me, I'm not sure what their interest was, or what, you know, would be in the, in the property, they didn't, they didn't say, so it's valuable, it's right in the middle of the Lays Wood, it's a nice campus there, so, I mean, y'all don't, if you don't have a need for it, there's a need to the community out there, so we can be well with that, if that's where you, where you're going to do it.
We've heard some of those things, concerns and anticipation of possible uses of the structure, that's the reason we've had Mr. Schmatters come back and say, um, the quarter is surplus, we just take a look and receive caution before we do anything. Short-term gains, it hurts long-term, and I think that's interesting, so I've heard part of old neighbors that want to make sure we're right on the long term.
Well, with the, I mean, with the additional properties that's, that's out there, and that particular property, to me, that's the most viable piece property that you, out of that, that you want to keep, and do it for a simple reason, because, I mean, it's no, it's no secret that we're actively trying to do something with that old hospital, and, you know, we have a contract with you all for another three or so years to provide some space, but, you know, at some point in time, that has to be addressed, and, and, you know, it's, it's just, there's just a lot of options, so that's where I.
I can't speak hard, but I'm sure we'll make back into consideration, that's what I've been doing, and we need to always do all the time, and do the work to make sure that we've got care of that valuable asset.
Well, I think that's one of the big things, I mean, I've heard two county commissioners sitting here saying, sort of hit the point about central office. I've been on this board fourteen years, and I know that's always been a topic about central office. Moving into central, it all comes back to money, I'll say, because, just like Mr. Bill Upson said, when you go in our store, trying to move the office into a school, then how you're going to get it up to where it needs to be with, I know, we still have records in the bottom of, then, in the basement, but records that you keep, it has to be locked up, kept, kept locked up, I don't know what time, which is you have there. So, I mean, I think that's just one of the things, I mean, we can always try to look into that, but then, going with building and grounds, talking to the judge, getting that school up to where the central office can move in too. I mean, that's always a big thing.
Or the departments. Right. Food Service.
Yeah, Food Service, eating.
Peter, I was telling you, central office, office is school related, so I was thinking, I was thinking, well, the industry or some other enterprise that would have to really have to knock them off now.
Anybody would have to knock them off now to make that building suitable for their particular needs. I think one of the big problems that we had first with central was, was some of the intentions of some of the community was that, oh, y'all were just doing that so you could put central office in, and that was, was kind of some of the, some of the heartaches associated with having closed, closed.
Yeah, but that building that we were in, we've been here seventeen years on this board, and yes, you know, hospital building has been discussing for seventeen years at the time. We do keep, putting money into it every year, to have to update a little bit, it's been updated carpeting, the painting, and there were some pretty sad situations and pictures of the condition at that moment, that's kind of scary, I won't tell that. Senator Perry might have been up there on the hill, the land, that's almost a, in my opinion, but, but then, yes, government and our employees sitting up there on the hill. So, yeah, there's, there's several things that our system needs to do, but like you said, it comes down to money, if the old hospital, if it's on, we would hope maybe some of those funds could be used to help, help our schools system remodel to make a building suitable where it was just, I mean, it's always subject, you know, I'll have to talk about it, no matter what the budget, so we would time the money to find that, we have a tough time keeping our teachers and board and county. Yeah, I'm, I'm, Mr. Francis, I'm on the, I'm just on our board, but the building could be very useful for our system.
Something to acknowledge, and we've all got to be careful of it, not to let political optics cause us to make a bad decision. Sure, there's going to be some costs involved, sure, there's going to be some industry changes, but like I've heard Mr. Upson said, that's a nice piece of property, we need to get more of it.
And, you know, really and truly, probably be the least costly way to, you know, and, you know, you mentioned some of the kickback from the community when you closed, but I mean, it was a numbers situation that cost that, and, you know, anybody that was willing to sit down and look, and what we were faced with, I was on here, and what we were looking at coming down the block, and we had the charter school coming in, I mean, something, something had to give, and, and, you know, it looked like there wasn't another one involved, and, you know, so.
Like you were saying, yeah, your employees have been discussing that same situations. We've had a drop in enrollment in this county for many years, you can see the agent back there, he says it's a good discount now, so it's a, it's a tough situation to deal with.
We would much rather be on the other side of the situation, where we had a surge in jobs, moving people in, and increasing enrollment, and hoping that we got the school, so we'll live in reality where we're at.
And I think the neighborhood county's success could roll over into Haverdome County, and families moving here and seeing the excellent school system we have, is going to be an all-star in the future, and another reason to keep central in reserve if we do, and that situation in the future where we have classrooms that are busting at the same, so to speak, that we have a place to go, whatever we need to.
Well, I know, we talked, you know, when I was on here, you know, about the possibility of kindergarten, or the possibility of fifth grade kid, sixth grade kid, so, I mean, there was lots of talk back in the day, and, and, so all that stuff is out there, or, you know, it's been talked, so. To me, that's the best use.
The numbers increasing now, I mean, I know, what does it look in, to me, is that what you're looking at, future plan, or?
It looks like we're not losing anymore, but we're not gaining as much as we're probably going to do, but it's kind of played out.
Our birth rate's pretty stable, if you look back, four or five years, some people will be entering kindergarten in the next couple of years, so around three hundred, you know, hey, daddy, we were up thirty, forty, four hundred, and then that's fifty-two point hundred, every couple of years, you're adding, over twelve, you're gray group, thirteen, you got kindergarten, we're down to about three hundred, but if that's better than going, it's pretty stable there.
So it's just a thing of plan, is that what you're?
What it looks like, and that's just birth rate, we don't know who's going to move in, who's going to move out, for economic purposes.
How long does it take that, right?
Plan, about three years.
And he trains pretty well with the economy, he watches the economy, watches the birth rate, definitely.
I don't think one reason we want to keep this school, central elementary, is we turn back into this school at some point, if you do, Governor, for a, you know.
You have the influx of, you know, the county government, you know, local counties kind of exploding, you know, we're hoping that we can leave out the belt, and we start seeing some of that, and we are, in the eastern end.
If wasteful metal had continued to grow, we would have had to move some kids to central elementary.
One, maybe one of the right six.
We talked about six. What possibilities? Just as an example, Bill, when I was the principal there, we were ten, sixteen, they're right at eight hundred, maybe just a little under.
We thought we were going to have to build another building, we never wanted that.
A little bit of that probably came when we had the class students go to East End County, to balance the, the, the balance, that balance, that, you know, schools, high schools out there.
Just forgotten, yes, I mean, this is sort of a political issue, you know, if, if, I listen to the commissioners, it sounds like y'all prefer the school system to keep it, that's what the pressure I'm getting, we're hearing the school system wants to keep it, but we don't know what to do with it right now, we have awful lot of contingencies out there that be beneficial to the county and the school system, but again, that involves money, what the use is, except, same to me, that if, if, if the school system makes a fact, there'll be some sort of committee for the building, the ground, and, and, and the history, so you can start looking at some potential uses of that property as far as, you know, the gym with the recreation department, you know, move the food service from craftery to bus garage, all of that, probably going, going to the hill, you know, other, other joint, but I don't think, you know, I just want that, I hate to say the building back, and I'll start moving something for the benefit of the county, but I think everybody's wanting to talk about what, if law continues to use it out there, it's all going to take, identify those purposes, and how we're going to work together on this with, that's why we're going to be buildings, like maintaining buildings, we're going to set that as our fall down, y'all will build, are there, and, and, I, I just suggest that, I've thought that out there since.
I think about who loves boards, and, you know, I heard you wouldn't be in this room if, if we formed a kind of joint committee. We were on this side, then we would be, I think, I'm finding the move forward is just indicated, I think our goal would be to find a, I just don't want to, if we're kicking it back to you, I don't want to start saying, telling you guys what to do with your property, it's your property, but we would entertain some type of joint effort for the use of that property. I think that's what we need to do.
Probably what we need to do is come back, see, do a real needs analysis and utilization analysis, and then if we, we find out we have parts of that building that are available, such as a gym, that is going to be used, and then we pitch back to those guys and say, okay, here, here's part of the property that could be utilized by the county, and just see what we can.
We need to work in.
I think our business, we need to squeeze it off, and everybody follow it.
If you have a committee, that's fine.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it still needs to stay, I mean, it needs to stay in school, I mean, that's where it needs to go, then we'll talk, Joe, what's it costing us right now, I mean, we can sit here and keep the gym back and forth, and we're, we're spending money on it right now.
Right now, we're paying utilities like oil, water, silver, probably in the neighborhood of fifteen, twenty thousand a year, obviously, I've not looked at those specific numbers, but other than my, my maintaining the lawn and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, because you still don't know that, you just can't make a, let the rag stool up even a little, I do.
I looked during operation, it cost us right at sixty thousand a year for utilities, so, but it's ending, we've got the setbacks and everything, I would estimate fifteen, twenty thousand.
So, little standpoint, if we take it back, we start thinking about some use for it, it may be out, what we can do as school system, we can't run necessarily all certain problems out there, so we approach it, we want to be.
Well, I think, I think what you're talking about, I think, you know, that, that we need to be sitting in, you know, with either our two commissioners, it's part of the education, represent the education part of our, our, whoever on our board along with you all, start looking at it and considering, because, you know, central offices, I mean, if, if, when in fact, if our, the portable housing, something did happen in the next year or so, that's going to be, central office is going to be in a critical situation, you got three years, three and a half years, I mean, you know, if you start looking at stuff now, so I think that's a good idea.
Right, I believe that the legal problems can be overcome by some sort of, you know, local agreement.
Yeah, I think it can, but I think it, we think of what the, that's what happens in a joint.
Have to address that.
Yeah, I'm glad there's a, a central campus for, you know, get the bus garage off of the, it's a bus garage, it's a, right in the central campus, bus garage, the food service, and, 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 if that's what one side plays out, if it doesn't provide regulations or, I think that's why it'd be, you know, agree with, Chip, like, what, at least, agree with, at least be satisfactory, and not, I'll bet on it.
We'd be interested in being involved, but I want, it needs to, the school board needs to make a decision as to what they want to do with that property first, because it is your property, and if you say, we can't use all this property, and we don't have use for that, then, then you can involve the county and say, we don't have the use for the entire property, but you want to have some joint use of it.
Well, but now, we keep on talking about, I'm not a lawyer, but now, Mr. Pat just said, okay, we offered it to the county, so now, as of tonight, the county's saying, well, we don't want it, you know, do with it what we want, I mean, what's the deal, you know, I mean, that's what you just said, so is it ours?
No, it, it, it's.
I mean, I know it's still ours, but what I'm saying is.
If, 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 if we're under reading between, appears to be, that the county doesn't want it, and they're saying, look, y'all may have some future interest in it because the county's got fun certain things, and says spend them, they do other things, and always look at the overall budget, just take it back, and then start working with the county on some joint use that'd be beneficial for both county and the school system, and I'm just saying, if we take it back, we sort of start doing that for.
And I think to go back to your initial point, there was an offer, there was an offer made, we haven't rejected it, we haven't accepted it, we've just said, we would like for you to reconsider the offer that you've made.
And I think, I guess, like the board's saying, yeah, we'll reconsider, but work with us on the benefits, uses for, because we'll take it back, we got something else to do, we're going to be in the same situation two years from now, we're sitting there with the building, hasn't done anything for the benefit of the county, but nothing happened, so.
Let me ask you this, if it is sold, how is it sold, is it sold that we need to upset bid? Okay. So in the event that you did enter.
You need to do a public auction, you can do a private bid, and, as I say, yeah.
Or to a nonprofit, definitely like you said.
I mean, so at the end of the day, if you guys decided, you don't, you go back and take a look at it, reconsider it, and you say, you reconsidered everything, county, we, we don't, we're offering it to you again, this is what we want for it, county goes, we don't want to pay that amount of money for it, you go enter into another contract, you enter into a contract, and it's a lot less than what you offered to us, then we look at it and say, you know, we think it's a good idea if the county keep that property for us, we'll upset that bid, you know, if we, if we.
Yeah, I just want to make, I mean, I know that, but.
So on a timeline, is the next step, that we just rescind the offer?
And isn't there, isn't there some stipulations that if it is sold for monetary value, that money becomes, that's to be used to retire that?
That's what I understand, but I'm not the school.
That's what I understand, but I'm not the school, I'm not the school board.
So you wouldn't have a pot of money, you go do something else with it, you're a lawman, that's right.
Why don't you break into it? How you need to know that?
I think, I think that's right, because if we get it, we sell, we can...
Retire a cap.
Yeah, that's for a cap.
I guess I kind of have a question to the commissioners kind of along that line. Everybody knows you're trying to sell a hospital, and we could, or do something with a hospital, and we could potentially, they could get out, how long we'd have once it was taken place. How much would it benefit y'all if we were already down? If we were in the process of getting it? I mean, would it help, would it benefit? I'm asking, I'm asking.
I think the only benefit that it would be, would be as if we were planning on hurting that.
I mean, I think every, I think everybody deep down knows that's a perfect place for them to send a hospital. My thinking is, if it would benefit y'all and us to have speed to sell that bill on the line, maybe we need to start looking, getting some funding from the other way and start remoting, working on the sample.
We're not likely to, we're not likely to, to sell the property until the tax credits get approved, that's been the whole of it.
I, I think that, that, that's to the point that it needs to go back to you determining what you want to do, and if there are renovations or things that, that you think need to be done, then I think you, you get that together, you propose that to us, and then we can battle back and forth on whether that's what you need, or this is not what you need, or how much we can give you, but if that's what you want to do with it, that'd be the problem.
Right.
And it's not that we don't, we would not, I mean, we're not anticipating the fact that you're not gonna need some renovations, I don't think it's a bad, we're anticipating. Very good. Then we can fight over the taxpayer.
Very good. But we know who's winning.
That's right, it's all ours to do. All right, well, I think we're pretty well hammered that.
I was gonna ask Pat one question, Pat, if, if the, there's spaces that the school system doesn't need, they, they move into central elementary, can they lease space, or does it have to be? I think we can lease space with nonprofits and other government entities. You can do profit, you can do profit. It gets questionable, I mean, it gets very questionable, and then we're competing with leasing out for the private enterprise, and could be competing against them, so. So, same thing with y'all, it's hard, it's a, it's a little tricky for us.
There was a bill that was introduced last year that dealt with that, I think, and I don't think it passed, I've got, I mean, I think a local bill, y'all familiar with it? Had to do with police holes.
Yeah, it would be tough to hold it, you know, to do it out as a private enterprise. I was just thinking, the, the gym. I, I just, yeah, I mean, I think you could do it to the county recreation department or something like, and, and we do lease on temporary basis to schools and nonprofits and everything, but not the, not the private enterprise. So, but I just like, if, if, if the system takes it back, you know, some sort of proactive plan is, y'all, as, you know, identify what the needs are, start working along those lines.
That, that I agree.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have a budget update, and, uh, who wants to start the budget discussion?
This is a very difficult new to be able to vote together, there's a lot of unknowns out there, you know, like benefits, but we had to take and develop that with the, with the very best information that we had to find. Also, you know, from the community's whole treatment and retention, you know, the desire was, it was overwhelming that, you know, we looked at our employees so that they would stay in the county. So they decided at that time that it's unanimous that we wanted to actually increase the settlement. Well, Angie and I had worked in several other departments who had worked really hard, you know, how are we gonna come up with money, and what are we gonna do? Came up with what we thought was a very viable plan, beginning with, you know, years zero, three, four, and before to have, and then every five years it would jump to about a seven percent. Which that's not what the, um, and Ashford, the counties around us have, but it's getting us a little bit closer to what we've been doing in the past. And we had just calculated and just kind of came up with the money that we needed, and then House Bill thirteen came in. So with House Bill thirteen, there's, there's a lot of uncertainties with that, because it's an unfulfilled mandate studying that, uh, that, you know, lowering the class size as far as folks pay through credit. But if we were to do that according to the worst scenario, the worst, uh, riding of the household that we have seen, then that would, uh, that would require us to hire ten additional primary teachers. And that's about four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand, so you could say that was kind of a swap off. Now, if it's gonna be a lot, of course, we have to do that first, so we went back and added the ten classroom teachers, you know, into our budget for this year. So Angie's gonna tell you a little bit about the benefits, the things that, that we've actually developed and have benefited.
Uh, Lola, in your packet, you've got a copy of our local current expense budget and child nutrition, and also our capital budget. But just kind of, I'm gonna give kind of a bird's eye view, uh, my anticipated budget needs next year are sixteen million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That's an increase of seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty over sixteen seventeen budget, so we're kind of jumping into how that, how we got to that number, let's talk about where's the money coming from.
Well, we think that in the, say, the sixteen, if you say so.
The sixteen, two sixty-three, forty, forty-eight, forty-eight seven, that's about seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand more than our current year budget.
What we're allowing to issue?
So, uh, the anticipated revenues, of course, uh, county, you know, we have our funding formula, and so, uh, our county appropriation next year should increase by four hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars, uh, taking us to two thousand and sixty-four dollars and some change for our appropriate appropriation, and the current funding formula, y'all will recall, is a lookback formula. So, um, the increase will be based on seventy-one eighty-six for our ten-day ADM, another three hundred and twenty-nine brick-and-mortar charter students, and about nineteen virtual charters, and they're cheaper, they're seven hundred and ninety dollars per student. We also anticipate about four thousand dollars more in ABC related, and this budget has an appropriated fund balance of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. So, uh, going into the seventeen eighteen budget, some of the budget assumptions that we used were an anticipated two percent salary increase for, uh, the hundred and forty budget positions that we have. Also, we are anticipating for ten increasing from the current rate of sixteen point five four percent to sixteen point seven five percent. We, uh, are planning on healthcare, matching healthcare costing five thousand eight forty-nine per year is currently five thousand six fifty-nine per year. Um, and so those were the budget assumptions that we used for budget positions. That total cost is around eighty-one thousand, um, some bigger picture items that increased our budget, uh, as Dr. Garrett mentioned, we, uh, had to come up with a plan to fund about ten classroom teachers. And so five are funded in our local current expense budget. The other five, Mr. Upton, if you want to stand up and take a bow, you may, this came from you, uh... We were gonna use, um, we were in a meeting last fall, and Mr. Upton, um, said, Angie wants to call Buckland County and see what they're doing with their teachers, and so I called over there and talked to the finance officer, and took those Buckland County ideas back to Dr. Garrett, and we kind of scaled those back down to Beetham County in our need, so. Uh, thank you, Mr. Upton, I appreciate that, but how we'll be paying for five of those positions is by doing some ABC transfers on the state side. We're using, uh, from state sixty-one, we'll be transferring enough for one teacher, state DSSF funding, uh, our twenty-four money, where, uh, we typically allocate that to our middle school remediation, we'll take enough for one teacher off the clock before we allocate to the middle schools, and then we're gonna, uh, transfer about the value of three teachers for our textbook transfers, and again, that's what Buckland County does, and we kind of scaled it back to us, I, I, I appreciate that, I mean. Uh, so that, the five in, um, the local side, so that increased that line, additionally, we are, I'm sorry.
How many, how many, so that will give us how many locally paid teachers that we're bidding for next year?
We are going from twenty-one and a half this year to twenty-six and a half next year. And, uh, like I said, those other five will be paid for the same.
But what did thirty-five and a half?
Are we having to get, get a waiver in order to, to do that?
We will do those requests through DPI. Um, and then additionally, another, uh, big budget item for next year's budget is we're having to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our local transportation because of a decrease in ridership over the last few years. And, uh, Mr. Trantham, our transportation director, he's taken, um, some buses offline, he went and talked to our finance committee, and, um, you know, the consensus was we didn't want it to be too much of a hardship, because the more buses that you take offline earlier, you're getting children on buses, and players getting their own home. And so we've appropriated a hundred and fifty thousand locally to, uh, help him, so he doesn't have to take any of those off-line. Uh, the hundred and forty budget positions that we have in local dollars, we're projecting that cost to be about six point two million, if you want to explore that further, there's a breakdown in your, in your blue folder. Additionally, additionally, we are reinstating, uh, some program area items, and that cost is three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven six ten.
And what we're reinstating at a hundred percent will be your vocational, your CTE, your exceptional children, the middle and high school remediation, assistant coaching supplements, van travel, van supplies, school supplies, and then also HCLC.
So I believe it was today, so there's not much left to fill in, is that right, that we could?
Some of the items, like the twenty-two teachers, and we had two assistant principals and two coaches, but we felt that there might need to bring those back, and there were two, I'm sure that was not necessary, but by these, we're...
Would you repeat what you, you were talking about, you filled them in, I mean...
That's kind of what I call it.
We funded at a hundred percent.
Okay, that was some of the cuts where you took, took about last year?
We brought most of these up to eighty percent, and then this year they went up to a hundred percent. So the ones that we did was the vocational, the CTE, the local matching that we did, and then the exceptional children, the matching that we did with that, uh, middle school and high school remediation, and then assistant coaching supplements, van travel, van supplies, school supplies, and then also the HCLC.
Well, that's good news.
There it is.
Good news.
I'm already hurt, we all done are happy, you know, you hear about athletes first, the coaches being reinstated, I've heard, and post-therapy, and I'm happy.
Just get it, you know, the rounds up first.
Any questions on the budget?
So, so we, we filled in everything, really, that needs to be filled in, so, and then you do the five, the five on, uh...
Teachers.
Teachers. So that lease is still short on the five hundred thousand percent, right?
It does, now, if the, you know, if House Bill thirteen is funded, or if another scenario was another ride, and the bill is presented, and it allows plus three for classroom, then of course, we'll go back and revisit that. But we won't know that until probably, I don't know, when we start from January to October.
And I, I'm sure you, you would talk about, uh, I, I, it's hard to find out, you, you talk to one group, you get one answer from one group, the other, uh, it, uh, on the House Bill fourteen, so. Uh, I know they've asked you to do a survey, so you'll maybe get some information later on.
Well, we have seen in our survey, and we were in total compliance with, you know, the allocation that we gave, that they gave us was based upon eighteen, some of it was last year, but every single criteria, and last year, you could go up to twenty-four per classroom, and you was still in compliance. Well, that according to House Bill thirteen is above the case, and that's how we got the ten teaching positions. Now, when you look at the ten teaching positions, again, that doesn't take into account your teacher's system, that you have to have kindergarten teacher, nor supplies and materials, nor even the facility for the teacher. So, but we thought that we can handle the rest of it if we, if we just had some kind of, uh, reimbursement or some kind of funding for those ten teaching positions. So that's why we didn't buy.
I was reading for a while, White County, it was unreal, how much, was it forty-five million, or forty-seven? Yeah, fuck, three.
I'd like to ask some, some questions on that, because I'm, I'm a little confused, you know, I've been trying to really dig into this a little bit, try to figure out my hands on it, but if you keep talking about House Bill thirteen, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, because, you know, I dug into this, you know, of course, the past is, class reduction last year to go into effect this year, okay? So then, we got some, you know, kickback about the potential, you know, damage to the schools or whatever, you know?
I think the kickback was they were, I, I'm, I'm not sure this happened or did not happen, but the intent was that it was not, they were not, and some school systems might not have been in compliance, and so that's why we went back and we changed it every year we've been...
But then, but then the way that, that it was told from me, or the way that I understood it, that House Bill thirteen was a compromise bill that come to ease the restrictions off of the Senate bill, or the, the bill that was in place, okay? And then, then it passed the House, sitting over in the Senate, in the committee, parked in the committee, and, but what, what they're, they're telling, what they're saying is, is when they reduce these class sizes, that they funded, that they give money to do it, and that some of the school system diverted the money out of other places, so they requested this, uh, this information to come back to them so they could look at it, and if they deemed that everything looked okay, then they would take up Ha- House Bill thirteen. So House, so, so what I'm confused, I guess, is that House Bill thirteen is actually a bill to help alleviate some of this pressure that on this class reduction size, is that...
Now, there's like two versions of that, Mr. Upton, and one of it does give you the plus three, where it does give you the flexibility. And see, even last year, when we did allocations, we did them at the highest amount, because we had, because we take the positions that we had extra, and we used it for art, we used it for music, and we used for video that on entry school, because they were, that we were not funded for those positions. But still, we were in compliance, but if you look at the current, and I'll just give you like one great little, because I know this could be tedious, but for kindergarten, for example, last year, we were funded at eighteen, okay? Your LEA average, which means when you average all your classrooms in Hobe County, it has to be twenty-one, but you could go up to twenty-four as a class size, so there you have full flexibility, so even if you allocate at twenty-four, you're probably gonna be okay, and we went back to make sure that we were okay, okay? Then if you look at kindergarten, which is, if the general assembly takes no action on it, it's going to be teacher funded, a lot will be eighteen, and then the LEA average has to be eighteen, and then the class size can only go twenty on your classroom, so see, that doesn't give you total flexibility in that plus three law, what we've used in the past. And then if you use House Bill, uh, thirteen, the way that I've seen it now, your allotment would be based upon, you know, one child, or, you know, one teacher, eighteen students, and then your class size could actually go to twenty-one, and then your individual class size could actually be twenty-four, so that allows a flexibility too.
Okay, so, out of everything that's, that's, I mean, you know, what y'all are having to deal with now, like it, is today it gonna be, uh, required the next school year, or seventeen eighteen?
It is.
Okay.
And what we did, we had, we did the allocation for this past year, we went back, Dr. Willis, you did it like in December, we went back and looked at it again, because we knew this might happen to us. When we went back and looked, it would require that we did ten additional classrooms, well, not ten additional classrooms, according to the ADM, as best committed to project.
Yeah, let, let, let me try to make it real simple, because it's, it, it's really, the, the number of teachers you allot is really simpler than it sounds, okay? For, and I've been doing allotments four, five years, Carol's not, did four back, give me a few. Uh, the class size max in ki- in kindergarten through third grade for years and years and years was twenty-four, okay? So when we did our allotment, I would literally look at, uh, kindergarten students at a given school, and, and I think one of the problems that was confusing for people across the state is they looked at what the LEA average would be. Well, it doesn't matter what the LEA average could be if the law requires you not to go over a certain number in a specific classroom in a school. So what I would do for years, and other people have done it too, is I'm looking at the number of kindergarten students, or first grade students, or second grade students, or third grade students, there's, it, what, what looks like, I'm putting it on the board, or show it to every principal every year. Um, and I would divide that number by twenty-four, because that's the most that could go in the room, and if the answer was two point nine, then they got three teachers that would keep them under twenty-four. If the answer was three point three... If the answer was 3.3, then you had to give them four teachers because you couldn't put all those students in three classrooms. And that's the way we've done the allotment for years. So what's going to happen next year is HB 13 says the allotment is 18 in kindergarten, 16 in first grade.
I haven't figured that one out yet.
No. Well, I think it's because they think reading's going to start first grade. Let me continue to simplify. 18 in kindergarten, 16 in first grade, 17 in second, and 17 in third. And there are no class maximums after third grade anywhere in North Carolina. They're gone. They've been gone for several years. So for this coming year, and we do the allotment based upon the average of the first month and the sixth month, we just got the sixth month, that's one of the next things I'm doing. Instead of dividing the kindergarten students that Hazelwood or Plaid Pick Your School by 24, we're going to be divided by, divided by 18 plus 3, which is what HB 13 allows. So we'll take that number and divide it by 21. So if you're sitting there with 84, 85 students, and you divide by 21, that's five classes that we're going to have to have at that school. Under the old rule, when we divide by 24, that's one more teacher. And that's how simple it is. You're just instead of dividing by 24 and putting a teacher there for that classroom, there was nothing in it, you're going to, in kindergarten, you'll divide by 21, in first grade, you divide by 19, which is 16 plus 3, and in second, third grade, you'll divide by 20, which is 17 plus 3. So that's where you get the nine to 10 extra teachers that you're going to need unless the law changes it. Another thing that the state legislature did that sounded good and a bunch of people cheered about, had no impact at all on what you could do with allotting teachers, they added a phrase that said after the second month, that's 40 days into school, you could go plus six. Well, no one can do that.
You can't disorganize once you put kids together.
You can't start with 30 kindergarten classes and then on the 41st day of school go, oh, we can go plus six now, so we're dissolving those six, those four classes, we're firing with rhythm with teachers, and we're spreading those kids out into other rooms. So that clause they put in there was useless. So, but right now, if you take the 18, 16, 17, 17, plus 3, and do the numbers based upon the second month of the year, that was just us guessing. It looks like nine or 10 teachers. We will actually do a preliminary tentative allotment in April, which we always do for principals so they can begin to build next year's schedule and look at hiring and dismissals. It's probably going to still be around nine or 10 teachers. That's the simple math.
Does that interest you?
Divided by a smaller number, so.
Well, you know, I'm just, I mean, I've, I've really been trying to dig into this a little bit. So, so what if they don't pass that?
Okay, then we'll, right.
That's the 19. They, they were good. They needed something.
Okay, but then, I mean, because I'm, 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 I don't know, I mean, I, I was under the impression and some of the information that I was getting was that they dropped this class reduction in place. And then HB 13 was, was passed to try to alleviate some of that existing, uh, uh, problems that this, and that's why it's parked in the Senate because they don't know whether, because they think they give you enough money to, to pay for the class reduction.
Well, they do if you don't have any art, music, and those classes, which we happen to find very important because our kids do art and they play in bands and, and they do sports. And if you want to eliminate all of those, which I don't think any of us did, then it gives you enough money just for the classroom teacher for them.
Well, if that were a funded mandate, we would should get additional positions or if that were not even passed, then we would certainly go back to our Finance Committee and look at, and see if we could do something with their stuff.
So the state doesn't fund any of those positions?
In the HB 13 legislation, we have seen no mention of funding the decrease in class size.
But they implied that money was given last year.
That's what they're saying.
That's what they're saying.
That's what they, that's what they, they're saying. And, and, and then they are threatening the, uh, to, well, I, I don't exactly know what to say is that, that, that they're going to take the flexibility away and tell you this is exactly how it's going to be there.
Or they won't not have art or music.
See, those funds were used to fund art, the, those kinds of places. If you take that, those funds away, hey, those programs have to go.
Because of...
That's 16 and a half positions.
Because, you know, what I'm trying to do is find out what's best for the school system and then try to work on the legislature, look, this is what needs to happen.
In my opinion, what's best is how we're doing now, where we have the flexibility to do the plus three and the way that we did the, if we, if we were allowed to do it the way that we did it this past year, we would not need those nine or 10 positions and we can still have art, music, and video.
We, we, we preach flexibility from the beginning of time in education. All the time.
So, so basically, what we, the Senate is, is they don't need, they don't need to even deal with the expectations.
They need to rescind it.
What you got already is a bad law for last year's appropriations bill, and HB 13 is trying to address that in some way. So, so when, when I was talking about the way it was done before, the way it was done before was even before the last year's appropriations bill was passed. That created, that caused the problem and put, what McGrady's trying to do is address it, and he may not have done it the right way, but he's trying to address the problems that last year's appropriations bill caused. But that's where the funds came from. There's no, there hasn't been any fun, any, any funding yet. That was about the issue of the appropriations bill. They, they changed what they funded last year, but it may not.
Well, I, you know, I, I haven't counted the pennies, but all I know is, is when I'm charged to do 10, 15 teacher allotments and teacher allotments, I've gone from dividing by 24 to dividing by 20 and 21 and 19 pending on the grade.
And that's based on the, the bill, the bill that you passed here?
Well, it passed last year, we just didn't have to follow it last year. They passed it.
They passed it last year.
Going to affect 17, 18.
And then 13 changes that.
Yeah, 13, but the, the way, the way that they're sending me the information is HB 13 is to alleviate some of the problems.
That's what I thought.
That's what I, I mean, that's...
But who can argue with lower class size? No one can. And no one can argue with that, no one in North Carolina can.
Well, if it's a law, then it's fine.
But what it does, it does give you the flexibility, and we still have some new ones, and we'd be glad to show you those.
So does 13 do the appropriations bill? Does, so does 13 actually alleviate the, the one that was just recently passed?
Trying to. Says it though. He thinks it though.
Yeah, but what they're saying is HB 13 is worse than what they've done.
13 gives you the plus three.
And it helps. And plus six after two months.
So HB, I mean, but is HB 13 better than what you got?
It's unfounded.
Not better than what they had last year.
The plus three appropriations bill.
We need to be able to do what we did last year with the plus three. That helps us and it eliminates us from hiring nine or 10 additional teachers.
The plus three is better because the original bill didn't have a plus, but we didn't have to take them back until next year.
I can tell you that the North High School Association is actively fighting HB 13. Actively fighting HB 13.
If you get the plus three, then it's...
See, that's what I want to know, if that's, if that's what needs to be done, then that's the direction that I'll work on.
We want the plus three, plus five.
Yeah.
There's, there's... And a teacher assistant in the room.
And they're along there.
They're fighting for those classroom sizes.
That's good, absolutely.
It does. It, it doesn't produce classroom sizes K through 3, but 4 through 12 is going to be out of control.
And art, music, and video.
I'm hoping that Henderson County Superintendent, their board maybe is fighting this, that would be key, wouldn't it?
What are you trying to do with the 4 through 12, spark classroom sizes?
We start our division there at 26. We tell them, it's just the facts of the matter, working with the, the positions we get from the state and then the positions that we pay out of local, we start the division there at 26, and we tell them they'll get another teacher when they do it at 28. And that doesn't sound good, but that's better than a lot of places, and that's, that's what we've done the last couple of years.
So are some of these systems, are they raising those, are they raising the students in those classes?
Oh, yeah, they're divided by bigger levels.
And that's how they're coming up with the teachers to, to indicate?
They're doing that, and I don't know that I want to say this on camera, but while, while I'm, while we're on camera, I'll say it anyway. I think some of them are misappropriating federal funds. I think they're taking Title I funds and paying for regular classroom teachers, which is a supplant, and I think they may get called on that, and we don't want to go there, so we have not done that. But I think they may have done that with Title I and Title II, and that's just a rumor mill opinion that I have, and we don't want to go there.
Mr. Perpetus, for example, this year we were allocated in kindergarten, based upon the ratio, we were allocated 28 teachers. We only used 22 of those and we were still in compliance. We use those four additional teachers in art, music, and video because we thought that was important. But every grade level, we were in compliance.
There are other counties doing away with their music, art, and video.
Well, they're either doing that or they're, uh, they're taking their grades 4 through 12 or 4 through 13 and they're increasing their class size, or they're not having any new class options.
Large counties are experiencing growth. They're having, they're having to look at things like, like the RPE and career technical. Any, any kind of classes like that become questionable.
Like White County's going to write 52 students at that or some kind of number.
It is, it is.
Clear as mud.
Where are we on the unit? We're down to...
I've got to talk.
What I'm hearing is, well, what they tweet 13?
Plus three is on second.
Not lesser. It's a bill that enacted that starts in this next school. You want what was before they enacted that bill that's supposed to start since the 11th. And you don't want HB, HB 13.
But, but wouldn't they have to repeal the last one?
But they don't, well, the initial one.
But they can do that, they can do that appropriations bill.
They could talk to the seniors.
So what, what is that bill? What's it called?
Last year's appropriations bill. I forgot what number it was, but, um, that's where all the...
So basically, you've got to repeal a law that's already in place. HB 13 has amended, has made that, has lessened that, but you want to go back before the law was in place now. That's, that's the way it's right.
At least a full review.
I've been, I've told them to explain that. HB 13 goes first. Plus three is on second. Last, last law for the last one goes third.
Okay, we're down to, we did touch a little bit on the supplement, we didn't go into any more detail on that.
Do you have any questions about the supplement? Where we have been and what, and, you know, according to the committee, and that was a priority, but now priority of the committee also that, that served only for receiving the teachers was not to increase class size. And, you know, so you're, you know, we, we know we can't have it all, but we think that we did find a way if House Bill 13 had not come into its, excuse me, existence, that we could do zero to four years of experience will be four and a half, five through nine years of experience five, 10 through 14 years will be five and a half, 15 through 19 will be six, and then 20 to 24 will be 6.5, and then 25 plus years would be 7%. And that would cost, like I said, about $423,000 in addition to what we have now.
I want to, I want to go back to the House Bill 13 in just a second to incorporate this because if you say if House Bill 13 had not come back, had not come into place, you would have had the money to do that, but in fact, there was a law in place already that said you were going to have to, to reduce class size. So why would, if you knew that was in place, and I'm just trying to flesh all this out, I'm not trying to make excuses, if you knew that was in place, why did HB 13 change it? Because you already had a law that was in place that was going to reduce class size. HB 13 allows a little bit of flexibility, but still does that, so I, I can't, and I'm not, I don't understand why HB 13 would change it.
It was never enforced. It wasn't going to be pushed out until 28. Then they, they began to legislate and talk about, well, we're just not going to do it at all.
Okay, then it didn't, it didn't take effect. That previous law would not have been effective.
It was scheduled to take effect in 17.
It was going to be, it was scheduled to take effect.
In the, in the House Bill 13.
To amend.
To amend it on top of 17, 18, I mean, that's when it was...
Yeah, but there's never been any change in 17, 18. It was always going to be enacted in 17, 18.
Right, but so you kind of knew this legis, there might be a change in legislation. You were hoping for a change, and then the only thing you got was HB 13, which HB, HB 13 didn't help you as much.
The folks we were talking to were saying, oh, that's going to change, they will never enact that, it's going to cost too much for infrastructure and teacher assistance. And we thought, okay, they'll, they'll look at that and go, mm. They tried, but they did, they just said, okay, you can go plus three. And plus six after two months.
So that's why I, that's why...
HB 13 actually ended up helping.
They were, they didn't know, HB 13 doesn't really help them as much as they like to be helped.
The appropriations bill would have been put in place, and there was no House Bill 13, then we'd really be in trouble.
But you'd really, you'd be in real trouble. Yeah, you'd be in real trouble.
Being a lot of, it'd be 17, 18.
This, this year, I mean, this, this next year.
And 20 pictures to the P8 probably would be out of control.
Okay, does, uh, any, have our, how, how many people have talked to our local legislature? How far have we gotten?
Well, we don't, well, it just seems like happening to just one person in the county, so I mean, heck, I don't know what...
Be careful.
I know.
Do we, uh, do we need to have our, our, our Commissioner of Education people and our School Board Committee meet with our legislators and, and discuss it?
Absolutely, yes.
I focus on the Senate side right now.
That's exactly where I'm at.
I'm not sure whether he's on rules familiar or not, but he's been there a while and he's well respected.
I've had a lot of good back and forth with him and trying to grasp all of this stuff. And, uh, so, I mean, I, I, it's service the best.
Because the bill, the bill passed, you know, it was on the floor of the House. That's why you have to focus on the Senate side, try to get a compromise.
The, the bill that, the law that's in place now, did they provide funding for that law?
Well, it wasn't needed. See, it went until 17, 18, went, went into effect.
Okay, would, are they anticipating funding that?
The appropriations bill.
Has they changed it?
Do you have any knowledge of, I've not seen anything.
See, their, their, their theory is, is they give money for the additional teachers.
But the, the...
The A's usually for other things.
But you don't have to have the additional teachers till 17, 18. So when it, I have...
We didn't get the money, I think it was 12. Somebody was telling us, they would get money. They would get any kind of money, extra money for teachers, anywhere.
He's trying to get to the bottom of it.
I mean, is there, that's what they're saying. They're basically saying that, well, we told them this was going to, this was going to take place because we passed this law and we funded it. And it, and, and so now basically, but they're saying we funded it.
They didn't really have to fund it, but...
Right.
But you said it passed the House unanimously, that was both...
HB 13.
HB 13.
But this bill that we're talking about, the bill before...
That was an appropriations bill.
And that's the one that they're saying that they have, that they, that they give money, appropriated money, and, uh, and the A's used it. And I'm about to get this, I'm sorry, but it's...
But you're saying they didn't, they haven't appropriated money. Have they, have they, have they appropriated money and yet you have something else you have to do with that money? Like, what about the insurance?
Well, I think legislation, and, and Dr. Anne, you kept me out here, what legislation that I understand is that's where PE teachers and art teachers and, and that money that's surplus, being surplus is a bad word. Well, I think legislation, and Dr. Anne, you got me out here, what legislation I understand is, that's where P E teachers and art teachers and, and that money that's surplus, being, surplus is a bad word.
So basically, they, they provide the funding, but it's, but if they provide the funding for these teachers, you don't have any money to pay for the other. The art teachers will use the teachers to pay for that.
Correct, flexibility goes away.
Okay. So they're saying, hey, we're giving you all the money for these teachers, we're telling you, you got to have this many teachers per classroom, we're giving you the money for that. And we're not going to talk about the fact that you're not going to have music, art, or anything like that.
We've been getting the money.
One thing that I think is important, Mr. Kirkpatrick, is in kindergarten, we were allocated twenty-one teachers, but we actually needed twenty-six, and we would never give an additional teachers. But then again, when you look at K three five, we were pretty much, I mean, that's how we funded the art and music.
What's the school board think about increasing class size from four to twelve? What's the policy, what are your policy or? I mean, I know that you can do whatever you want to, but what are you trying to do? What Dr. Garrett has said, what are the classroom sizes?
I would have asked Dr. Bill.
So we're trying to keep our classrooms as small as we can, because we want to, based on the ratio of the school. And then also, even beginning, you, you guys will remember this, you know, we've gone ahead and combination classrooms in the last twenty years, Mr. Upton, we've gone ahead and...
That was a big question.
The problem is, is that children learn better when they're in the classroom, but they...
That's what's wrong with me. I was in two combination.
They're paying his room. They're paying his room once.
We've been five times.
Fire his neck.
Okay, you will place some questions. H B thirteen. Sorry, we're...
I knew that one question, but if we pass the H B thirteen, or it's passed, and we have to hire ten teachers to go on with supplement, are we going to be able to get ten qualified teachers?
Well, see, that's what we're concerned with now, because, I mean, we've had positions this year that have been built, like even in early, uh, even after school that started, and that works. Because if you're looking at the whole state of North Carolina, you're going to have a shortage of elementary teachers.
Well, I saw it, there are only fifty-five hundred statewide. So how are we going to track them over Buncombe County without a good supplement? So we're going to have, it's going to have to go together. If we get H B thirteen, if it's passed, we have to hire ten teachers. We're going to have to revisit the supplement to, to get them over here.
Because you want these...
Or they're going to drive across county line and make sixty.
What's the difference?
What's the difference?
Unless it goes...
Starting with teachers, the difference in pay, the difference in gear?
Based salary.
But I mean, the, uh, so we need to factor supplement.
I think supplement over there starts. We start at four and a half percent, and they start at ninety.
So we're only four and a half percent difference. So we thought we had a difference now. We don't have to wait for the... But your, your, your spread is the whole, but further they get out.
And we have plenty of drawing cards that I think would be like, I know, that's because of how much we spend on state development. We spend a lot of our funds, local, state, and federal, like I think my show's three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, just on training our teachers. But we hate to train our teachers and then them walk next door to Buncombe County, and today, after we've spent them in training them.
We're doing exit off training, for example, current legal office.
How many teachers are there in the county?
Twenty-eight, Jason. Twenty-eight.
Yeah, so we're, we're training them up, getting them to state development, and then they'll go to Buncombe County and for retirement purposes.
See, we've had that issue, we've had that issue too, but you know, we're, there's a bigger gap in our, in the county employees versus Buncombe County than on the teaching side. I mean, you, you know, I mean, there's a gap, but on the county side, it's this way, and here it's this.
You're talking about pay?
I'm talking about tax.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I mean, we always can still compare Buncombe and Haywood.
And you can't really do that.
You can't because you've got, Buncombe, Buncombe County has got a lot more tax base, we've got a larger social plan.
We did exit surveys, I mean, the reason that they were given was, you know, going to Buncombe County because of higher pay supplement. I mean, that was the reason that we were given, we did the exit interviews.
On average, per year, how much award does a teacher going to take to go to state?
Uh, let's see. Just age.
For beginning, for beginning teachers, I think it's fourteen hundred hours, or my brother.
Yeah, I was just going, roughly, someone made forty thousand dollars, and they got four percent, and it supplements sixteen hundred.
That does figure back to your retirement, because that's where the kicker. Well, they're lifetime, extra additional income, that's something.
So if you had some supplement, would you go to the last five years and increase those to seven percent?
If you have a zero, you'd hopefully be able to compensate everyone that would be in the center, but your highest rule would be twenty-five plus at seven percent.
So I'm saying, if you had, would you do that first?
Do the twenty-five plus?
Yes.
I think what we should do, I mean, we need our good beginning teachers to begin in Haywood County, so it's going to have to start, I would, this is me speaking. But things will have to begin at the very beginning, so that, that the people that we have will stay here and aren't compensating. Because like you said, Mr. Clark, I mean, we're going to be competing for ten of the very best teachers to come to Haywood County. And if I can come to four and a half as opposed to A, then I might come to Haywood County. And then if I'm going to get all the training that you're going to receive.
But when, and we, even when I was superintendent, we can't compete with Buncombe County dollar for dollar. We just need to be competitive, and I, when I go, when I was superintendent, at least get up to seven percent. And our, I think all of our commissioners agree, they need, our teachers need more money, simply because of the job they're doing, so...
Well, even like in Hendersonville, you know, they do, beginning teachers commit eight and a half percent for their supplement. Twenty-five plus years do get eight and a half percent. But when you look at eight and a half percent across a thirty-year span, that's far more money than you're going to get.
And again, you know, I got a son over there, and I figured up his gasoline driving from Canton. About twenty-five hundred dollars of gas he's putting in that truck, so he's losing a lot of his supplement. Plus work.
Plus his extra time?
Yeah, so forty, forty minutes on the road, so...
Figure, figure time?
He gets it back, though, when he retires.
I was going to say, when he retires.
When he retires, he'll get that average of the best twenty-four months for the rest of his life.
You know, I don't think there's, you know, there's one of us here that wants to see everybody do as good and share, and make as much as they can pay. There's only one problem. There's so much money to go around, and there's only one place you get. Out of your pocket, out of my pocket. It's how big we want to try to get in the land.
I mean, you're just saying, starting at four and a half, start at five and a half, and then five, seven, five, and then six. We can get back to...
So you'd ru, you'd rather start with the beginning teachers, increase those, and then go up the line?
It's about all, all, all the time, all across the...
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Francis.
At one percent.
We've looked at, and Mr. Upton, we've looked at what Dr. Garrett's plan is, and of course, my opinion is, it's a good plan. Right now, zero to nineteen years is four and a half percent, so she's just trying to, her new plan chops that up. Say with five years, it goes up half percent. Say with ten years, you're at a whole percent from when you started. So her plan, I think it's rather than just doing a full one percent increase and keeping zero to nineteen, and twenty to twenty-four, twenty-five over. I think it's a good plan to chop up that zero to nineteen, and report it every four or every five years.
Okay, let's just, how much more does Buncombe County make than Haywood? Fourteen hundred a year, fourteen hundred dollars?
That game just happened again.
For the community teachers, that's about five dollars a day. I went and bribed them from Buncombe County about, for next to five dollars a day.
Not unless you live in Buncombe.
Right, you believe in that way, each month, though, once a zero to twenty-five, or twenty-five year, what is it, what are they at, twelve, sixteen percent?
Thirteen.
Thirteen percent where we're, we're, sixteen percent where we're at, four point five.
Yeah, but I think what Mr. Kirkpatrick was saying is, is the big difference for retirement, your retirement is figuring on your best twenty-four months. And they take those and average that, and get an amount, and that's what they make you retire with. So if you have twenty-five years, the supplement is how much here?
Five.
Five percent.
And over there?
And let's say you make fifty thousand dollars, this says enough, so five percent fifty thousand. You make fifty thousand over there, and your supplement is?
Twelve percent. Five percent.
Are you talking about Buncombe?
Yeah.
Thirteen percent, ten thousand dollars. For four years added to your loved son that calculates into the time, that's where, that's where you lose your best people on the end. And you've got to have some people coming in early, too.
And we lost some teachers that were twenty plus. Several.
On the exit interviews, how many of them said that they left because of the supplement?
The ones that we interviewed, uh, Jason, how many would you say, I mean, I said, like, one at the bunker, and then she just out and said, you know, can I come back when I retire? Because the reason I left was because of my last four years. How many would you say out of those twenty-eight said it was because of the supplement?
Well, we lost more teachers than twenty-eight. The twenty-eight count is simply teachers that said they went for it. You know, more teachers than that leave each year. We average between forty and sixty a year in turnover between retirements, family relocation, childcare, spouse care, whatever. The twenty-eight number from last June through now, or the, that previous school year through June, that twenty-eight number was the ones that said they left simply because of the money. And, you know, if I wouldn't drive over there for fourteen or whatever, that's a personal decision. The fact is, twenty-eight of us are doing it.
Living here and driving up?
Yep, and most of them live on, on the Canton end of the county, don't get me wrong. Um, I don't think we've got many driving from Pines Creek or Maggie, in the, in Maggie Valley or something. But the, the other thing you have to keep in mind is teachers, when they retire, most of them are retiring between fifty-two and fifty-five years old, not sixty-five, or sixty-two. So the average teacher will spend twenty to twenty-five years in retirement as a minimum. That's, that's a lot of money when you start figuring it out. Because we talk to teachers sometimes over twenty dollars a month, the difference it'll make in retirement, when you start figuring it in months. Okay? I mean, if, if you can add twenty dollars a month to your retirement, the average teacher, that's twenty thousand dollars in retirement, if they live to be set the average age. Uh, and so when we counsel them on retirement, we talk to them pretty heavy about that, of if you can just get twenty dollars added to it, that's a lot of money in retirement. So that's kind of what you're doing with, yeah, it's fairly small numbers, especially for new teachers. But when you're trying to recruit them, I was at Appalachian yesterday, uh, we talked about two hundred and forty new teachers coming out of Appalachian. Uh, most of them, where are you from? Greensboro, wherever. Where do you want to live? I'm open. That matters to me. I'm, I'm just talking to see what the best deal is. Uh, that's what they were after, so when you're talking about new teachers, they, they don't mind moving to Buncombe, or moving to Wake, or moving to wherever the money's at. That's what we got yesterday, talking to them.
Whatever we raise, whatever we raise to, if we match Buncombe County, which would, or take two, more than two and a half million now, if we matched them, guess what they're going to do? So if we can't get in.
They'll give a bit more.
Yeah, so I just think we just need...
I say, well, let's try it.
I, I think the seven, I think the seven percent is, is competitive.
Mr. Upton, that would've been a long one, trying to be a senior.
Right.
Mr. Upton, nobody ever said we need to try to match Buncombe. We were always just saying we need to try to narrow the gap a little bit, make it a little more competitive. Because we can recruit them with our working conditions, we can recruit them with the great community and the kids that we have here. Uh, if we can get that gap narrowed just a little bit, but nobody was ever saying we needed to match them.
Well, I think, it's, I mean, when you was here, that's what you was trying to do, we still trying to stay, didn't, didn't try to catch up, just doing that gap, making sure that we are competitive.
Yeah.
They pay more than ladies for years, like Mike said, in all industries. We don't know about them, they pay more. We have employees, teachers, everything.
That's not, that's not what I'm...
We're after keeping our teachers here, our morale, keeping our teachers' morale good, keep them, like I say, narrowing that gap just a little bit, we don't, you know, having we, others ensure... If you keep it close and then state development, so we can practice it, we can close.
Guess the bottom line is, if H B thirteen don't price, you're okay.
No, we're going to change that other law, the city.
Yeah.
We're going to change both of them.
If we can distribute our teacher, like we did last year, then it'll be okay.
Then you'll be okay to do what?
I need, well, I need that, that law on whatever that, what's their call?
Appropriation.
The, uh, H B thirteen's all right, except for... Which, which really comes back to the way it was prior to that appropriation.
No, there's no money behind. Well, I, I just want to elaborate a little bit on, on what Mike said and tell you, you know, what we're dealing with, and you guys look at us and say, we need some more money for supplements. When he's talking about despair in, in, in jobs in Buncombe and Haywood. There's, here's, we compared twelve different jobs in Haywood County. That, that are county jobs to Buncombe County, and it's, it was a sixteen percent difference. I mean, that is, that's a substantial difference, what the county employees are being paid here, as opposed to the Buncombe County employees. When you're looking at four percent in teachers, and so that has to be explained to people. Uh, and that has to be explained to the people that work for us, um, why teachers should get an additional supplement, additional money to close that four percent gap, when we're having difficult time closing the sixteen percent gap. Some of the, in, in Haywood County, a new teacher, a new teacher is paid more than the following occupations. Administrative assistant two, child support agent two, deputy detention officer, EMS paramedic, income maintenance worker two, librarian two, office assistant four, and telecommunications. In Buncombe County, a new, new teacher is paid less than the following occupations. Uh, administrative assistant two, this is compared to Buncombe County, the same positions. Administrative assistant two, child support agent two, EMS paramedic, environmental health specialist, librarian two, and social worker three. So Buncombe County is paying their county employees more than they're paying their teachers. And we're paying our county employees less than we're paying teachers. So, I mean, that's kind of what we're, what we're faced with, in attempting to say, we, we need to give more money to the school system in order to pay the supplements. And I understand the, I mean, there's no question that they, Buncombe County has a limited economy, they have more teaching positions open. And you're also faced with the fact that there's less teachers coming out of school in there, Jason. When you go to those work areas, I mean, when you said there was only, how many?
There was three hundred and forty yesterday, was it?
Isn't that one of the main schools that you can go to? And so, I mean, that's a little bit scary, when you go back to any, I was more concerned about the fact that how few teachers are coming out of college, because they're going to be able to demand more, and certainly you're going to have to prepare for that. The other thing is, you know, when we started that funding formula, twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, that funding form was meant for us to release our ties to what goes on in the school system and do with the money what you want. And that fund balance, your, your fund balance has increased over time, it has decreased the last few years, but it's still substantially more than, say, it was in two thousand and seven. And so the reason that you have that money is because of the funding formula over the years has provided additional monies that you've been able to, so we didn't have to spend. And, and so we have to ask the question, okay, what, what, what is your, what should be your healthy fund balance? And what could you use of those monies to take care of these supplements? And, and I'm just being blunt and openly honest about it, the way we have to look at it, because at the end of the day, we're responsible for telling sixty thousand people, including everybody that's sitting here, this is, this is why your, the tax rate is what it is, because this is why we need this money. And I don't mind doing it. I've, we've raised taxes a couple times, but you have to justify it. People, forty percent of the people aren't going to like it, but I've got to, I got to tell them why. And so the things that I've just stated about the, the difference in the occupations is something that we're concerned about, and we have, I have to weigh it for my county employees.
Six and seven is hurting. Appreciate you sharing that, talking about, you're not here a lot of times. Similar discussions, what you're talking about.
It's not that we don't care about the schools. Lord, I, I was, like I said, I was in accommodation class, went to school here, three, my children went to school here, and so I've got three stepchildren going to school here. I mean, I'm back right in there with them.
And each one of them, one, two, you know, you need to have them out there more.
Yeah, yeah.
Help us with the bird rush.
But, um, you know, and, and the teachers are much more vocal this time around about telling me what they think. My, the stepson comes off at the elementary school bus and walks into the office and says, hey, Miss so-and-so, I'm not going to say her name, she told me to tell you to give her a raise. hey, Miss so-and-so, I'm not gonna say her name, she told me to tell you to give her a raise. Which is funny, I mean, I know her, so it's not a big deal, but.
Let's do that. Any raise, there's, there's more pressure. You raise a next topic on our agenda, as a matter of fact, by the fund balance. And Angie, you wanna handle that?
Anything else you wanted to say about?
No, I don't think I told them.
I think I did.
No, that's fine.
Well, our fund balance at the end of two thousand and sixteen was two-point-five million. We have appropriated and decurrent sixteen, seventeen, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. And appropriated next year is three-hundred-and-one thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, three point four cents. Assuming we spend every dollar this year and every dollar next year, as a big assumption, that would leave us with a one point, not a million.
Angie, what is your comfort level at two million? Or what, where's your comfort level now?
Well, my comfort level, it's probably very different than everybody else.
You're the funniest person.
I tried to hold, no, I'm just kidding. My comfort level really is about one-point-five million. Mr. Frack is correct. In two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, our fund balance was down around one-point-one, one-point-two millions. There, there is a little bit of a difference now. We, during those years, we had a child nutrition program that had a very comfortable fund balance. And so, I think my comfort at one-point-five is because we don't have the, the fund balance in our child nutrition program that we have. I mean, we can make it work, you know, I don't know who's gonna take the buck or bills from the altar, but, you know, but one-point-five to me is...
Angie, is that a state requirement that you guys actually put here too?
There's no law.
I know we do, but we...
For the cash flow issues that Brandon, you know, you don't want to have a, a lot free, you don't have enough money to make it, because...
We're with the, uh, before you guys and get your photos.
How many months is one point? How many months is one-point-five?
Well, one half million is under ten percent of our next year's budget, the next year's budget.
Are you supposed by eight percent of it?
So, it's around that.
See, we have grants that we have to pay upfront and then we get reimbursed for, and then there's insurance service with the purchasing of commodities and stuff, we're always online for how that, because we have to pay.
What's the cash flow?
Yeah.
About eighty-five, we have every emergency, does that any kind of tax?
Three hundred and eighty-five.
What would be anticipated tax about?
I mean, what, what's?
Blood?
Roof, roof, major roof, it damaged the flood.
But if, if it's, if it's a roof, what's, what's the county's responsibility for roofs?
All weather.
That's what I'm saying. You have, you have to have that kind of catastrophe. Is it not our responsibility to maintain your building?
It's our responsibility.
Okay.
So, we had the flood damage. We, you, you were up there with the, the other chairman, kept promising, but it took a long time, didn't it?
It may be from, Kurt.
We got a lot of...
Oh.
Yeah, but we provide money for Capitol Apple, so if you got a, if you got a roof for something that goes wrong, I mean, I don't know that any commissioner's not anticipating, I mean, if we provided contingency funds for Capitol Apple, that's one thing. But if you've got specific, you've got specific items that you have for Capitol Apple and we provide that for that, and then all of a sudden you have a catastrophe, I, I don't anticipate any of the commissioners not looking at that as something that we need to help take care of.
That's what happens.
And so, I don't think, yeah, I don't think that's something that you have to say, if that's a catastrophe, that it's not gonna be taken care of, because...
Well, a lot of those catastrophic things too, when we handle lottery, it doesn't matter how much we, if you're off. It would attack anything.
Say the tornado that took the roof off of Johnson Valley, just completely, I mean, you know, that, that'd be something that we'd all have to sit down and really work on.
I think we just have to try to pay for it. I think, see, that's something that I can, when we go as a board together and we say, how are we gonna spend this money? That Jim Ruth came off Jonathan Creek. Jonathan Valley School, we can, we'll take care of that. That's something that's important.
True.
Well, I mean, it's just, I think that's what the money's there for.
On your, it was, I'll use the roof as an example. Whenever I worked in Jackson, I was in our fold. This has been six years ago, the windstorm kind of blew the roof up, saved it all. It was the fund balance that kind of maintained us because we had to pay for it upfront, or as the work went. Insurance come back through and reimbursed us. So, it's not one of those, that's kind of what the fund balance was there for, or what we used it for. So, I don't know if that kind of helps.
But, for example, if something like that happened, we not providing our budget for contingency for the school system, what we have to pay, we need to get on your agenda to come talk to you about this particular issue that's happening on this roof.
I think you could, but I think that it's nice to have a cushion to write the check right out of date until the two, two weeks go by and you have to, and it'll be paid back.
And I want that, I want you guys to have that, some kind, I want you to have some kind of fund balance for that, but I don't want you to think, this is all we have, and we can't go to the county to fix those type of issues. Because I don't...
Yeah, if you ever was having to wait for insurance and, you know, need to make a payment, I mean, I think we would kind of help, correct? Yeah.
That gives me a better comfort level than one-point-five.
Go around the wall now.
I don't have a sweater here.
Just as long as we don't pay the same as Tim Susselman and John Hattie, I'll say, how many did they say?
That's right.
Charlie, you got a problem, it's only as good for as long as we're here.
I got something, it, it, Mr. Frack requested, he said, Bill, when you pursue a tenant, you carry a big fund balance. I have fund balances for the last twenty years. We passed that, right? Got copies. Can you be able to send that?
Let me talk to that.
And some of...
I might even work.
You know, I mean, on both sides, I've argued for fund balance as a superintendent, not as much as the commissioner. I, I, I in our talk, and Kurt, I, I think one-point-five does a lot, gives you enough. It also tells me as commissioners and the public that you're spending the money. I just hate the form. A bunch of money to sit there, you know, it's almost like, well, if they don't need it, give it back to us, and that should give the county employees a raise, so. Uh, that's just for your information, that starts in nineteen ninety-eight through twenty sixteen. And you can kind of tell when, uh, the funding form took effect, it's two thousand and three, Kurt, four, somewhere in there, wasn't it? Can you see where we, we jumped up in the amount of money? Your low point was about six-hundred and ten. Twenty-twelve was the low point for fund balance, I believe.
And twenty-twelve was four-point-five million.
Oh, seven.
So, we're getting our money in twenty-twelve.
You're just getting one now.
We're getting our money in twenty-twelve, we're making money.
That's right.
We got the whole ball, man.
Yeah.
Now, two thousand and six, it was one-point-four nine.
Six, two bucks.
Very good.
So, look at two thousand and five, people, you done, my last one.
Five, your last one? Well, okay, I see that.
That's decent, that one.
Yeah. But just like we also talked, if you remember, let's see, there's two thousand and eight, the economy, let's see, gained till two thousand and eleven, two-hundred thousand, then it went down. And like I said, we cut two-point-four million dollars. If we didn't have that fund balance there at two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, it'd been a lot worse. We would've been cutting teachers before last year, and doing a lot more stuff. Doing a lot more cutting.
You think you needed five million to keep the teachers you had, is that right?
No, I'm just saying, if we, we would've been cutting a lot quicker.
Yeah.
If we had done, if we didn't have that fund balance before then. And like I said, that's one of those things.
Were you holding on to the thing?
Yeah, you could always sit here and say, okay, did we do something, should we have started cutting before last year? And get down to that point before then, should we have started cutting two thousand and ten? I mean, yeah, I mean...
You could say, yes, yeah.
I mean, yeah, you can sit here and say, should we have kept it status quo, should we have started cutting? Or should we raise fifth grade classes up to fifty students? I mean, that's one of those things that you just have to take into consideration. But, yeah, you, you're right, you're right.
I wanted to make sure that I wasn't asking the school board to do something I, I wasn't doing myself.
No, no, no. And I think actually, my, my board discussion, I went back and talked to Andrew, she gave me the, she gave me the answer she gave me tonight. She said, one-point-five. I said, okay, if you think one-point-five, you can get to one-point-five.
Well, we hope you have, like Kurt says, you have enough trust in us, that you really have some badge, you need to come that day. Because I, I, our, our board, in my twelve years, our board has never voted against education. I don't think we've ever voted in no, because I'm sure you've been on this longer than I have, so.
And just like I said before, talking to some of the other board members, we're all not gonna be here. Five years, ten years, that rough. You may have two different boards going, yet a lot have, you know, longer as good as we have, like, ten, fifteen years. So, I mean, you, you don't know what's gonna happen. So, I mean, that's one of those things, fund balance, ten-point-five, I mean, ten years from now, you may personally not be there. Captain Mish said, I, group floods, I'll take care of you, I'll say, we already...
We can't make any guarantees once we...
The, the drawback on, you know, if you did the fund balance down to one-point-five with the teacher's stuff this year, that's recurring expenses, we all know. So, again, next year we have to kind of find that, but again, or just have a bid go back.
Or do a partial, I mean, if people see that we're trying, I don't believe you're losing this year, I really don't. They determine, they gonna move it up.
I think that fund balance grew, simply as a result of dropping, you had continuous dropping in enrollment, economy didn't do it well, which makes you put the beans in the pantry. I mean, because you don't know what's gonna happen with any of kind of legislation, current changes in legislation. So, you have to sort of store back and kick the can down the road just a little bit, see how far you can go. And that's where you, that's how you end up here. And that's why you end up with the central decision made, and, and made it rather than two years ahead of time. You hope that something's gonna change.
But it sounds like, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with what I first manned on budget, though, I mean, it's... We won't get fussed at, Brandon, as much, Clark, we won't get fussed at as much with, with the new budget, will we?
You got, you said, when we were meeting today, do you have a consultant group that you, you'd already, about these labors, I know you said you were...
You have one that we used in the past, and then Angie, what was the number that we talked about?
In back in two thousand and twelve, after Mr. George came to the finance officer, we called in a group called SEC School of Financial Consultants at the... I was the hour, is who came in, and members of our board, of the board then, if you'll recall, didn't, they came in and they showed us how to do ABC transfers, and the state has taken some of those things away, but some of them we still do every year and have been able to save some money. They'd be interesting to...
So, you did, you liked, you liked, and then, do you continue to do that, or is that one-time thing and then you have to follow?
It was just a one-time thing, and then what they do, they, what they did, they came in and taught us how to do these things to, to get more things for our budget, to grow our balance.
That would be a good job.
You got a good job.
No, I'm just teasing. But they, they did, and then what they showed, we were able to implement ourselves and how to do them.
Does that, do they, do things change to where that needs to be done again?
You know, I, personally, I would love to see that group that we used back in two thousand and twelve come back in, because like I said, what they showed us, the state has figured out that people were really taking their state allocation to take the most of, so they've taken away a lot of those things that they taught us to do. We can't do this anymore, so I'd love to see them or somebody like that come back in and show us ways where we are right now, and what can we do. Does that make sense? Like, can't do that anymore, but what, what can we do? It was, you know, I felt like it was very beneficial, and I, I don't know, Mr. Rogers, I probably believe, I think you were on finance at the time.
They can either, whatever they say they ever seen.
They get fifteen percent of whatever they're good at, the worst they can get.
They, it's not like the first years.
Only if they find it.
There's not, how is there no, I mean, if they find it, they can pay.
Well, if, what they do, they take percentage of how they show us to do, like, I think we moved eight-hundred thousand dollars sideways on the state side, out of position a lot, and funded, just threw a ton of folks in there. And so, what they did, because that saved us money, they, they got a percentage.
Of them.
But again, you know, I wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily, like I said, what, what they do, they, they show you how to do that, then you keep it up. But what would be interesting is, you know, can they show us new things, you know, that we can take into account?
Well, whether the two persons on that, uh, board, not, not consultants, no, consultants, worked with the, with DPO for ten years, so that person should know what you can and can't do, as far as moving money from local into state is what helps you.
Well, what they do, what they call us, we're, we're trying to get the most money for our blood, out of our state money.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Well, I mean, how could we, since, you know, we, had, if we worked something, or, or, to get them here, I don't know, I don't know how you guys want to work pay, or if you could do that again, but I mean, that would be a good thing. It'd be interesting to do something.
I think there's a choice, what they said, and then they take it out from what I said.
Right, that's correct.
We'll be a wall. Hey, or you can just do it, I, what I don't want to do is say, do this, and, and do this school board, and it costs you something.
Well, we will, if I were to enter a consultation.
Okay. It's not supposed to, it's supposed to just, just like you said, it's supposed to, it's supposed to take what they, their fee, placement, but they say, certainly don't want to try.
I know, Captain.
I think they've worked with sixty-five.
I thought to hang her.
Eight years. They've worked with about sixty-five school systems, that's a large number.
And like I said, I would love to show us these things.
Well, and that's why I asked, because you said yesterday, you have that, you certainly don't want...
We need for them files, five, now, or not?
Well, I did want to, I found another for county, one-point-nine.
One-point-nine. One-point-nine.
We'll, we got a couple more of them, we'll, you know, finish up the meeting, and, uh, do you have anything you want to add at that point? Or do you want to move on to child nutrition?
I think child nutrition, I just want to say, it's been a pleasure being, talking about it, listening to the interaction, and I think, you know, we do need to do this part of it.
Absolutely. And you know, back when we were on the school board, or when I was on the school board, you know, we had a couple of things, I used to get, got away from it. I think just being able to sit and talk and back and forth, see where they're working, things, where they're at, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's, uh, both sides are like, well, county employees are maybe preparing to, or school.
They have, they know, that's, that's great information, yeah, it does help.
The county boys took a big hit.
They don't help them, or where they go, that's a problem.
I'm like Mrs. Garrett, I'm hearing those folks talk, during the ballgames, can I play you?
I cry Angel's phone, so you have to make them all process it, tired of me, I guess.
I think that's something else.
You assumed it was a business call.
Yeah.
Now we have, uh, Ms. Francis, give us a little bit on our child nutrition.
Our, our child nutrition budget for next year is three million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. This is an increase of seven thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-one dollars over the current year. Unlike the local budget, our money, we have to earn, earn it, we don't have a lot of money, so this budget is really just a guesstimation. Our lunch prices will increase by ten cents this year, which puts our K through five students at two-fifty, and our sixth grade students at two, I'm sorry, two-fifty-five for elementary and two-eighty.
I'm sorry, two fifty-five for elementary and two eighty for six through twelve, and that is a federal requirement that we do that every year until we meet what we're getting in reimbursement for a pre-student, which this year was three dollars and twenty-four cents, and that continues to go up every year as well, so we're up continuously every year trying to bridge that gap between us two reimbursement. Our expenses, our labor is fifty-four percent of our expenses, those increases projected increase in pay benefits that Angie mentioned, our food is thirty-eight percent of our expenses and then eight percent of everything. Angie did mention that, you know, our fund balance in the last several years has been very low, we currently have about three hundred dollars in cash on hand, and what, three hundred thousand, sorry, three hundred thousand...
I believe y'all didn't kill this, all right.
Three hundred thousand dollars in cash on hand, and what the state determines to be healthy for a child nutrition program in a month and a half operating balance, and that would be about six hundred thousand dollars, so we're not quite healthy, but we have a little bit more than we used to, so, we're working towards that six hundred thousand dollar mark.
Still a great price for the, for teaching.
That's price, I mean, that's what it costs to produce that lunch.
It costs us actually three dollars and nineteen cents to produce a lunch, so for those free and, this free student, I'm sorry, the paid student, we're losing money on every lunch, we're getting three dollars and twenty-four cents for a free or reduced student, so we're actually making five cents of meals for those students.
You could actually be up more, it could be up.
Every time, every time we increase that meal price, we lose participation, so it kind of weighs itself out, we're currently fifty-two percent free or reduced students in Hayward County, and that's the majority of the kids that participate in the program.
Another thing that went away was the stuff that kids were going to eat.
I hear that that may be changed.
We hope so.
We hope so.
Can we help us on that?
We have pizza fries.
And we still have pizza fries, but the pizza's whole brand, these jeans, you pepperoni on it.
What makes the decision as to what the school, what it costs?
We have to, the school board, but we'll vote to the...
No, we'll charge, what's our cost, what we charge, what we charge.
And so why, I mean, just why, why not make it what it costs because you lose participants?
We have price of sales.
If you lose participation, then you, then you end up just selling to people your free lunch.
And then it really advertent identifies the students as the free or reduced kids in the number four class.
That's a cost of value, lunch, food, how paid for.
We do hope to see some, some adjustments in the controls that started in twenty twelve with the reduction of sodium calories and whole brainings and things like that, that has really brought a participation over the last several years, and there's been, you know, an article here and there since the change in administration, but we haven't seen it.
There's a lot of reasons.
A lot of reasons.
Dr. Garrett, can I tell my story, for just five seconds, out of sight, he has driver's license, he's licensed to carry a weapon, he can go out and shoot animals during hunting season, he cannot legally have a salt shaker on the cafeteria table area, that's the craziness, and there's no correlation between salt use and health problems for adolescents who are otherwise healthy.
And we're actually supposed to implement another tech, reduction in sodium starting July first, but there is no current medical information to prove that that is necessary, so we're hoping for that to go into effect, because it already takes like a while, we have no point in getting that set.
Yeah, school rules got pretty, school rules got pretty fast, you know, and this, this, all of a sudden, you're all over this.
We have one more, a report from our life director, Joe, can you tell us a bit about our capital allocation?
I've put together a proposed capital expenditure, hopefully to take care of the roof capacity there if it comes about, hopefully we'll be ahead of that, I went through kind of line item by line item, like I did last year kind of proposing, I did break out this year and put line items for each school, ever so often, principals, they've got, they want to buy blinds, they want to tint their windows, they want to buy furniture, they've got different needs that they feel is important for their campus, so I tried to set aside a designated amount for each school with our supervision that they can purchase carpet, blinds, desks, cameras, security system, different things that make the capital needs of their facility, and kind of gives them a little input rather than us just saying yeah or no, so, I tried to give them a little bit of, that way they could prioritize their needs along with the system. At the top, I've still got HVAC, we're in the process of getting that project bid out, we didn't receive bids this third of them, so hopefully, at the next board meeting, I'll have another percent for that, our vision, that we're using our lottery funds.
So, roofs are in very good shape?
Our roofs are in relatively good shape, I put together a spreadsheet for the school board, I have about seven roofs that are on paper needed replacing within the next two to three years, I have one that was seven years old, I believe, right now, it's not giving us issue, but I'm trying to move it another year, so I'm just throwing money at it, we can use the funds in other areas if possible.
Not seven years old, seven years past.
Past replacement, so, it had a twenty-five year life on paper, and right now, we're at thirty-two, so, on paper, it's maybe seven years longer than it was supposed to, but it's still not giving us issue, so I'm trying to get the most out of those roofs without just spending money on them every year and putting towards areas that are a higher need.
Good job, Joe. Any questions for Mr. Garrett?
I do want to make a comment, Joe, that's very diligent, that's a table mind, one thousand years of gas, so it's like forty thousand dollars a year, and also very diligent about Fran, God, we're very grateful, Joe, thank you.
That's all, it's home in the kitchen, and, yeah, he closed, unless somebody had any other comments, I just was about to say, it's been an excellent meeting, and I appreciate everybody's participation, and just do it again soon, rather than later, and I think the more communications we have, the better, we're going to be operating more efficiently than we can operate, you know what we're kind of coming from, you know where you guys are coming from, and it's, it's open in there, and you see, you know, we're, we're in a, we're looking out for our interests, and you're looking out for our interest, and the sheriff's office, and the DSS, and all and all and all and all, and I know y'all know the place, so we appreciate your time, if you're willing to serve the citizens as they can, and thank you for visiting us tonight, and thank you for our funding formula, it's going to work very well, and maybe we can work together, if y'all know.
Our meets will be a lot longer, I've been there if we didn't have it.
Oh, yeah.
I've been lecture with you.
Chuck, we appreciate you having us stand here in the school, and the ability to work together, hopefully, and hopefully, so, I know that there's a lot of teachers anticipating that.
Thank y'all.